May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the minutes from our Board of Selectmen regular meeting from May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Jill Oberlander, I second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thank you. And next, is there a motion to approve the minutes for the Board of Selectmen's special meeting of May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one?
Lauren Raven, so moved. Jill Oberlander, second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes. Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go up, down to the updates. I know we have a, we have a busy day today, starting at twelve-thirty with an event for Deputy Chief Marino, so we'll, we'll try and get through this as quickly as we can. The first selectmen's updates, I'll do the COVID numbers really quickly. They're all really good. The total active cases in town since the beginning of the pandemic is five thousand one hundred and twelve. That is plus seven. Total active cases is seventeen, that's down three. Thank God, there's, uh, no more reported deaths. It's been at eighty-nine for several weeks now. And the cases per one hundred thousand in Greenwich is down to two point three, that's cut in half. Last week it was four point six. Other categories that we should pay attention to as of May twenty-fifth, sixty-two point seventeen percent of all age groups in Greenwich have been vaccinated with the first dose. That is plus three point eight-three percent. So that's probably a little bit better right now, too. So, uh, all good news, both here in Greenwich and in the state of Connecticut. So, uh, hopefully that will, that trend will continue, we think it will. All right, I want to give a quick shout out to the Junior League of Greenwich. I joined them last Saturday for a cleanup of Milpon. It's the beginning of a restoration of that area that we had been planning for the last year and a half. And there's more to come, both via the residents and also the town Parks and Rec Department and, and Tree Division. I want to thank also Darren Wigglesworth and John McDefasone and a few others from the department last week, helping out there, did a really, really good job. More to come there. Also, shout out to Lauren and everybody in Abbey Large over at, in Glenville for the beautification project that's going on there. That's going to be terrific. We had over a hundred people on Zoom the other night, so that is, again, each one of our sections of town is going through revitalization, so we're, we're very proud of that. And to, and from my perspective, we're just getting going, so that's, that's all good stuff. This, reimagine Greenwich Committee that Lauren is chairing is really, it's making great strides now. You're going to be seeing some nice banners up there soon, in a couple of days. I'll let Lauren fill you in on the Free Music Fridays, but lots of exciting stuff going on downtown and lots more ideas to come on that. Also, proud, very happy to announce that there was a compromise over at Greenwich High School between the people who were advocating for compliance with ADA and also the, the Tree Conservancy supporters and also the athletic community. Everybody was at the table there. Reached out to Greg Kramer when there was a little bit of an impasse there, and he was really gracious and, and was willing to take another look at it, and we worked out a compromise. So, uh, everybody seems to be happy now, at least most people, and that project will go forward. But also, I had a couple of meetings with the departments about both streamlining and, and making clear the, the permit process here in town. It's been this way forever, but we think it should be much easier and that everybody should be on the same page and not working in silos. And so when, uh, our goal is to, when someone, uh, go, when an organization or an individual goes for a permit and they see the checklist at the beginning, and as things are checked off, we want all the departments to be able to see that. So they're not, uh, so someone doesn't think they're ready to go for CL and all of a sudden they're hit out of left field from a particular department or the tree warden and saying that something hasn't been, uh, been addressed. And so, uh, I was happy to hear that DPW is working on that now, Parks and Rec also, and certainly that will, it'll take a few months, but I, that's going to be very, very helpful going forward to our residents. And, uh, so a few more things, but I'll, I'll wrap it up here. We do have a couple of events, one-thirty, I will be reading a proclamation for a day of remembrance for enslaved people of Greenwich. That'll be over at the Greenwich Historical Society, and I hope, uh, my colleagues will join me there. And I also know that they want to join me over at the Police Department at twelve-thirty as we salute our Deputy Chief Mark Marino and wish him well on his retirement and I thank him for his years of service. I'll read a proclamation there, and I, I just want to read it really quickly here. I won't read the other one, uh, for those who won't be able to make the ceremony. Whereas Mark Marino began his law enforcement career in nineteen seventy-seven when he joined the US Army and served as a military police officer until nineteen eighty, when he was honorably discharged. And whereas on June tenth, nineteen eighty-three, Mark was sworn in as a Greenwich police officer and ably served in many capacities and assignments during his career with the Greenwich GPD. And whereas his abilities and steady leadership has served him well as he rose through the ranks, he was promoted to sergeant in ninety-five, to lieutenant in two thousand and four, to captain in two thousand and ten, and to deputy chief in two thousand and twelve. And whereas during his tenure, Mark became a member of the Special Response Unit in nineteen eighty-eight and has been the commander of the unit since two thousand and nine, as well as head of the Professional Standards Division. And since two thousand and nineteen, as we all know, has been directing the Parking Services Department and has really helped turn that around. So we thank him for all his work there, too. Whereas Mark's dedication to serving the residents of the town of Greenwich has been recognized by numerous letters of appreciation, appreciation, awards, commendations, including the Greenwich Lions Club John C. Clark Award, the Meritorious Police Duty Medal, the Greenwich Police Department Merit Award, the US Attorneys Award for Law Enforcement, and the Investigators' Ribbon. And whereas after thirty-eight years of exemplary service to the Greenwich community, as of June, as of June first, Mark officially retires his shield to spend more time with his family, especially his wife Lisa, their son Christian, and daughter Megan. Now therefore, I, Fred Camillo, for Selectmen of the town of Greenwich, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, June fir-, June first, two thousand twenty-one, as Deputy Chief Mark Marino Day in the town of Greenwich, and urge all our residents to join me in celebrating and in recognizing Mark's contributions to our town and in wishing him well in his retirement and all his future endeavors. So, thank you, Chief, and we'll be talking to you in a little bit. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you very much, sir. I much, much appreciate that, for sure. Thank you very much. Totally unexpected, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next up, we'll have Lauren Raven with Selectmen's Updates.
Yes, even though, Mark, you're a Chiefs fan, I, I totally agree with the proclamation. So Fred mentioned the Glenville Beautification, a public forum that was held last week, so I won't go into detail there. Free Music Fridays does start next Friday, June fourth. We have a lot of talent booked, but I know people are still reaching out. I'll just mention that we're trying to hold some spots for some of the GHS students, which we're still trying to connect with GHS on, and certainly trying to space out the types of acts. So definitely, if you're interested, we're interested, but just know that we are trying to sort of load balance the types of acts that are performing. And assuming this goes well this year, definitely something to do moving forward on a more consistent basis. Thanks, Fred, for talking about the banners that are going to go up on the brackets, patriotic banners in time for Memorial Day, and that's a partnership between Think Greenwich, which is also known as Greenwich Forward, and DPW, so thank you, our Department of Public Works. So excited to have that. And then the last thing that I've started to work on is to reestablish the project with Ben Branin and Dan Carlson on kicking off the municipal KPIs, or Key Performance Indicators, that align to our planning of conservation and development. And where we're focusing is on the six guiding principles, and we're trying to flesh out our ideas, working, the three of us, as well as our Town Planner Katie DeLuca, over the next six weeks. We're going to tackle two every two weeks, and then once we have sort of a draft of our ideas, we'll start to bring in more people for their feedback.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. Appreciate that, good work. And next up, we have Jill Oberlander with the Selectperson's Updates. Come on in, Jill.
Good morning, everybody. And first, I'd like to start off with my personal thanks to Deputy Chief Marino for his years of service, both to our community and to our nation. He has been a model of courtesy and cooperation in, at least my personal tenure with him, and I've really appreciated his outreach and his expertise, as well as his professionalism. I wish Deputy Chief Marino you great joy in your retirement and really wonderful time with your family. So, thank you on behalf of all of the residents as well. So, earlier this week, this board had the opportunity to stand together at a rally in Stanford against antisemitism, bigotry, hate, and in, in, in support of democracy. And I just wanted to highlight that, we got a lot of, it was thrown together at the last minute, and all three of us were able to attend. We've gotten a lot of words of appreciation from our community, and really important that we all stand up all the time against hate, against antisemitism, against bigotry of all kinds. There has been an incredible increase in antisemitism in recent times, and as a community, I hope we will all stand together against all kinds of hate. And I want to thank Fred and Lauren for, for being there, and anyone has any questions, they should feel free to reach out to us. The Greenwich was, was represented and proud, actually. Earlier this week, thanks to our Department of Public Works and Jim Michaels, we were able to, the Sustainability Committee was able to meet with representatives from Connecticut DOT and their consultants on the Route One Bridge Project near Greenwich High School that is moving forward. They were really responsive in, at least the conversation to some of our concerns, and it is the beginning of a dialogue, and I really appreciate Jim Michaels' efforts to set that up, and also Connecticut DOT to meet with us. And that's it for, for now, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jill. And thanks for mentioning the other night, Greenwich was the only town that had the full leadership there, as the whole, all three of us attended, so it was a, it was a proud moment, and thank you both for, for being there. Okay, now, there is no old business, so we're going to go skip right over to new business. And first on the agenda is an amendment to the Traffic Ordinance regarding explanations of the parking citation appeal process. And with us, we have Luanne Bellantoni of Parking Services. Good morning, Luanne.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. Camillo, Ms. Oberlander, and Ms. Raven. I'm here to present an amendment which would replace previous explanation of the parking appeals hearings. Basically, the, the major change is, it used to be done in person, held at Town Hall, but since COVID, we've opted to do it telephonically only. So basically, that's the major change, where we still, the timeframe is fifteen days allowed from the time that the person is given a citation in order to appeal it. It goes into our appeal queue, where it's vetted. If any errors were made on our part, we void the ticket. If not, it is vetted and then moves along to the appeal process. We currently have six hearing officers who are not in any way, shape, or form affiliated with the Parking Services Department, so they're independent entities, and we currently schedule approximately one hearing a week. So thus far, it's worked very well. We communicate with the appellants through emails. They confirm similarly, and it's really the way to go. And a highlight that we enacted, it was initially, some of them were done from the Police Department, the, the hearing officers, and then you can understand, people might be reticent when they see caller ID that says Greenwich Police Department, don't know why, but anyway. So we opted to actually get our own dedicated phone, cellphone, and then we provide the appellants, this is the caller ID, you know, two oh three, whatever, so they know what to expect, a call within designated day, within a two-hour window. And that's worked pretty much ninety-nine percent. And another change we made is that the hearing officers do not divulge their decision at the end of the call. They mark it down on a sheet, and my staff then emails the decision. That cuts down on the, the disagreements, et cetera, that the hearing officers in the past had had to deal with. So, um, I would say, um, we would like to enact this going forward, and COVID, and no COVID, I think this is the best way to go, because people don't have to make their way to Town Hall, they just set aside a two-hour window, and it's really worked like a charm. And also, it's able to enable those to get current. Where in the past, we're six to nine months behind. Right now, you probably have to wait no more than two weeks to obtain a hearing. So it's worked, it's worked perfectly, as far as I can, you know, say.
Thank, thank you, Luanne. Any questions for Luanne? Jill?
Hi, thank you. So I guess I just have some questions about what the process is. If somebody doesn't receive your electronic communication, how will you know that? What if they don't have, you know, what if something's not working with their email? How will, what if they don't have an email? What if you don't have their email? How, you know, act, you know, it's, I'm just curious about whether this is a burden on, on some people.
No, actually, the method, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't mention how they get to the appeal. The appeal information is, how to appeal it, is only electronically through a specific system. On that system, once they log in, they put in all their pertinent information, license plate, date, citation number, and their contact information. They have to provide an email address and a phone number, and that's where we get their email address to communicate, not one to three emails. We've reached out to them three separate times to say, this is your first notice, you've been scheduled at this designated time and date, please confirm your, your ability to be available and confirm the best phone number. So we do that maximum three times. If perchance, someone comes in and they don't have an email address, we will take the application on paper, and then they will provide, you know, a husband, a wife, or sibling, or, you know, child's email, so we can then confirm it, or we confirm it with them on the spot. I mean, we do have flexibility, but we do our best to reach out to people so they are afforded their quote-unquote "day in court" or "day in front of a hearing officer."
Have you, have you thought about calling them as well to confirm they got the email? If you haven't heard back for confirmation, or are you asking them to confirm, you're sending them an email about the appeal or hearing date? Are you asking them to then confirm that?
Yes, we are, we are. In every email, we ask them to confirm that they can be available for that date and time, and also provide us with the best contact number to call them during the appeal hearing. And we do that three times, maximum three times.
I understand that, but are you asking them, before the, calling them at the hearing, have you thought about calling them to confirm they received the email?
That isn't in the plan. I mean, we thought that it, it is a very labor-intensive process to put together appeal packets and to schedule this, in addition to all the other tasks the Parking Services, you know, conducts on a, you know, daily basis. So very few people have not responded, but I, I, I don't know if it would warrant that, since we are reaching out to them and an email that they've provided.
And, and you, they can still appear in person to submit their, although...
Yes, they have no other means, right? And, and also, they have one opportunity to reschedule the hearing. If perchance, they're not available at that date and time, we give them one opportunity to reschedule it.
And the, the other, so I have two, so I, on, on the, I see that both Town Attorney Schellenberg and Town Attorney Amman are both on the call, so I guess I have two questions for them. One is that they should review the language of the, the proposed language. I, I'm going to ask whether we don't vote on this today, that the language in the proposed edition be reviewed for, what's the word? For clarity, I guess. And the second is the legality of requiring someone, someone to acknowledge that they will abide by the decision of the hearing officer, and the decision rendered is, is final and binding by submitting an appeal. Is that, I saw, maybe, Barbara, I don't know whether you're familiar with this now, but, or I'm not, are there any legal concerns with that language?
I, I have not reviewed this. I'd be happy to do so. I'm not aware of any concerns. I have more insight into this.
I'm sorry, I only caught half of that, but...
I, I'm sorry. I have not reviewed this. I would be happy to do so. I'm not aware of any issues, but Amina may have more insight if this is something she is more familiar with.
The current decision of the officer being final is actually in the current charter.
That's what I thought, too.
It's in the current charter. So it currently exists.
It, it says that the decision shall be final, but it doesn't say that by submitting, is on your, on your appeal documents, when someone submits an appeal, when they appear in person, are you asking them to waive their right to contest the appeal on your current documents? Because the way this is drafted is by, is slightly different. So I don't know whether it's a difference that makes, it's a, you know, makes a difference or not substantively, whether it's form, I'm going to defer to the town attorneys. If they haven't looked at this language, they should review it regardless. I'm not, I don't know...
Yes, I'm happy to look at it also. I, I frankly have not focused on that. I'm just thinking out loud, is there further right of appeal from that decision? But we can certainly take a look at that.
Okay, so, so I would ask that we, that we ask the Law Department just to take, if they haven't already seen this ordinance change, they take a look at the language, also read it for clarity, and also on, on that notice provision.
Okay, thank you, Jill. Yes, I, I would support that, just to give us some time to, two weeks, just to allow the Law Department to look into that. So, yeah, to those, address those issues should be brought up. So, Luanne, we'll have you back in two weeks with the, with the clarifications on that. That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luanne, appreciate it. Okay, going on to the next item is the proposed parking ordinance change regarding the renewal of annual parking permits. And a lot of people, this is one of the things that kept me up back in December of two thousand nineteen a lot. So we have Deputy Chief Marino with us to explain this change. Morning, Chief.
Yeah, good morning, everyone, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present today. So the first item that I would like to talk about is the permit renewal process for parking permits, for the annual permits. Again, so over the last couple of years, having been involved in overseeing Parking Services and the, seeing some of the issues that go on with the renewal process, one of the things that we'd like to try to improve is allowing people that, for whatever reason, whether their personal reasons, you know, things that, that go on, that they, you know, we have on occasion a handful of longtime annual permit holders, if you will, that missed the deadline. And these are, again, people that have had permits for many years, and for one reason or another, they forget, they have family issues going on or so forth. So currently, the sys-, the ordinance requires a late fee for people that are ten days late, and an increased late fee of forty-five dollars if people are between ten days and the end of the month of typically December, which is the, the month, deadline to submit applications. And once January first rolls around, if these people, again, for one reason or another, have missed the deadline, they're really, there's no other alternative for them. And, you know, I know the First Selectment has heard from a number of people. I've heard from a number, number of people also that have been in situations where they've just missed the deadline. So what I'm proposing is that people that have missed that deadline have thirty-one days, the first, basically, the first month of the new annual permit season to renew their permit. But with that would come a, you know, significant late fee, if you will, you know, and I'm proposing that the late fee of forty-five dollars be included in an additional late fee of two hundred dollars, plus the cost of the, the full cost of the permit to renew this, to renew a permit at that late stage of the game. You know, one of the things, the Parking Services has been very, they've been very cognizant of, is the waitlist. And so very soon after the renewal period closes, we look to start working on the waitlist for people that have been waiting for permits. And so having people not renew their permits on time kind of delays offering permits to people that are on the waitlist. So I think having a significant fee will also deter that, that from happening for a late fee.
Thank you, Chief. I, I know we heard last year, end of two thousand nineteen and beginning of two thousand twenty, lots of people that were offering to pay some, some a lot more money to get their permits back. But just a real quick question, so I don't think that's going to be a problem from, based on the dozens of conversations I had last year, but how, again, did you arrive at the extra two hundred, just in case someone asks?
Well, so the forty-five dollars is already included as part of the late fee structure. And, and again, this is something that we, is a last resort for people that have had a permit and, you know, for one, again, for one reason or another, neglected to renew their permit on time. And so it's not something that we want people to be using on a regular basis. It's a, a one-time opportunity for people that, for one reason or another, missed a, missed the deadline, that they can apply for the, for the permit. So again, I feel that the, the, the additional fee needs to be significant in, in order to deter people from using this as just a, you know, I forgot to do it, but no big deal, I'll do it now.
Thank, thank you, Chief. Again, I heard a lot, a lot of bluffers that were more than that, just...
Exactly, I agree.
Anyway, thank you. See Jill's hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Chief Marino. Can you just tell me a couple of questions? How many people are we talking about that miss? You know, out of how many, you know, out of how many parking permits, how many people? What's the order of magnitude? Not anecdotal, but actual numbers?
I would put the number at between, probably less than twenty per year, maybe closer to fifteen. That, and, and again, we, you know, Parking Services has gotten mu-, we've improved the process so that it's done electronically. There are reminders that are sent out. We talk about the banners on the town website. We take full advantage of that and really try to get the word out to permit holders that, you know, the deadline is coming, please get your applications in on time and send reminders. So I would say there's probably a dozen, on average, over the last couple of years, I would say about twelve that, of people that for one reason or another missed the deadline completely and were unfortunately not, were denied the opportunity to get their permit renewed.
So approximately, and at, at how many permits?
Approximately forty-five hundred.
Right, so it's a very small number of people. And are they the same people each year? Out of curiosity, or are they different people?
Uh, I believe, I had information from Parking Services staff that there was one particular person this year that, you know, was a, we'll call her a repeat offender, if you will.
Okay, so maybe one of the dozen routinely misses the deadline. How many people are on the waitlist? I know you've made a lot of great progress...
Okay, so maybe one of the dozen routinely misses the deadline. How many people are on the waitlist? I know you've made a lot of great progress. On on clearing the waitlist in this last year or moving the waitlist, I guess. How many people are on the waitlist?
Well, there's, there's a waitlist for each parking lot.
Right.
I don't have those numbers in front of me right now. I see Luanne's on the call. If she has.
If if I could interject for a moment. Um, currently, there are 3,126 people on a total of 10 waitlists. But this particular year, beginning in December 1st, 2020, which was our first waitlist, we call them waves. Opportunities for people where we reach out to ask them if they want a a permit from the waitlist. We offered, so in a total of five occurrences, we offered a total of 2,854 applicants of waitlists, the opportunity to avail themselves of a permit. And 598, which is about 21%, decided to to take the permit.
Okay, so you, so so we still have 3,100 on the waitlist. And you offered over 2,800 spots. So there are a lot of people on the waitlist, right? And and just to remind, so the process, do all of the permits expire December 31st? Is it a calendar year?
Yes.
And you so and and how this would work is, and you start giving them notice, how far in advance of the permit renewals?
It would be the first month of the new permit cycle. So if the permit expired on December 31st.
Right, no, I mean, when do you tell, when, if I, you know, if I, when does a permit holder receive their first notice that their permit is expiring?
October.
October. So they have two months in which to submit a renewal application.
Well, they have three months, two months without penalties, and then the month of December, small penalties are incurred.
Oh, I, so they have to renew by December 1st?
Well, not to not incur a penalty, a late fee, yes.
Yeah. So they're notified sort of early in October, beginning of October. And they have two months to renew without a late fee, and then the month of December. They get the late fee. Which is the $25 and then $45?
Right, it's two tiers.
After the, oh, so your permit renewal date is December 1st. Is that right? I'm just looking at your, the materials submitted.
Yes.
So December 1st is the permit renewal. They start to incur late fees, and on January 1st. They will have in addition to the $45, a $245 additional reinstatement fee?
200.
An additional $200 in addition to the $45 that would be assessed in December.
Right, so it would be, okay. Um, after the end of the first month, the new will be, okay. This, is there any thought to see, you know, trying this as a, as a pilot? To see whether by allowing reinstatement, you end up with more people? I mean, I think it's a heavy cost. So, but we do have a heavy waitlist. I don't know, thinking about out loud. Just thinking out loud. No further questions, I guess. I mean.
Thank you. Um, I thought, Luanne, I thought last year, I thought we'd said notices out even before October, maybe, maybe I'm getting things confused.
The si- the system went live in October, so maybe a week before that, we sent out physical letters, and then once again, we also send out an company email, and then three reminder emails throughout.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I I could have swore there was more than a dozen last year that called up the office. And I felt bad. I mean, a lot of them had, as Chief said, had been permit holders for, in some cases, over 20 years. And so they were, you know, begging, you know, they would pay anything to get it. So I do like the idea here, offering up just one last chance to to get back on that list. So I'm I'm okay with this. Lauren, any questions?
Uh, yeah, so one is, thank you to Jenny on the second page with the the red line, the second sentence of red line assessed. And late fee should be a late fee. So that's just a typo. And then it's my understanding about the waitlist that if somebody chooses not to come off of it, do they remain on the waitlist? So if you offer them a spot and they don't take it, do they stay on the waitlist, or do you remove them from the waitlist?
Uh, they're removed from the waitlist, and then either they or we can add them back on as courtesy. Sometimes we do that. And also, some of the people who have failed to renew, they forgot, et cetera, et cetera. We also perform the courtesy of adding them to every available waitlist, and their names have come up because some waitlists are shorter. Plaza and Greenwich happens to be the most populated. But, you know, in in the meantime, they, you know, maybe in sometimes a month or two or three months, they can be awarded or offered a different permit, which then can be swapped out when they get off the other waitlist. So, um, most people, maybe less than a handful, have been very vocal. So we've able to work with the other ones and offered them, hey, we can put you on that waitlist, and then it comes up and they're happy, you know, so the vast majority are happy with the way the system works, especially it being online and not waiting for the post office and not waiting for checks to be lost, et cetera, et cetera. So we've streamlined it. And it's, it's working exceedingly well.
So, yeah, I guess my my impression is if there was, you know, X number on the waitlist and you offered spots to 500, so let's say there was 2,000 on the waitlist, you offered spots to 500. And they didn't take them, they are not part of your waitlist anymore. They specifically come back.
Right, unless they put themselves, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve this?
Um, Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the proposed parking ordinance change regarding the renewal of annual parking permits.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's, yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Thank you. Next up, again, we we have Deputy Chief Marino.
I apologize, I don't have an agenda in front of me. I know we have two more issues on on the agenda, North Street and Millbank Avenue. I don't know which is first.
North Street.
Okay, thank you. So this matter came came to our attention based on a email that a citizen submitted to the First Selectment's office, and it was directed to, then directed to Parking Services. And it has to do with this, a very small stretch of Lower North Street, I'll call it, where the resident was concerned about vehicles parking along the side of the road there causing line of sight issue for people exiting. There's one, one drive, one or two driveways there at the lower end of North Street that are, that were really, that were really being impacted by by the cars that were parking along the side of the road. Uh, it parking on North Street is not a problem. There, you know, I travel on North Street quite a bit, early in the morning, later in the afternoon. Uh, and rarely do you ever see any cars parked anywhere along North Street, with the exception of this one particular area, which was closer to Maple Avenue. Believe it was overflow from one of the schools in the area. And there's just the one section, this one particular area where you have the white line along the border of the roadway. The road is a little bit wider in this one particular area. And as a result, the width between the white line and the curb line was just barely sufficient to allow a few cars to park along the side of the road there. So in conjunction with engineering from DPW, we took a look at the the concern and were in agreement that cars parked along this particular stretch of North Street did cause a significant line of sight issue for the for the driveways there. Don't think that parking was, you know, in this area was ever really, there was ever any intention to have parking here. There is a stretch of North Street a little bit further up from Andrews Road to Lead a Drive. That is currently on the ordinance books for no parking. So what we're requesting with this proposal is to just extend that from Andrews Road to Maple Avenue to cover that full stretch, both sides of the road. We did, I did send out a letter to the residents that live along that corridor of North Street. Probably about 25 of them. And I will say I got two, two responses by way of phone call. One from a resident that was very supportive of the idea. And one this morning from someone who had just some concerns that that, you know, if there was an occasional emergency where people couldn't get into their driveway, they might need to park on the street for short durations of time. Or on the occasions when there might be a contractor working at one of the houses in the area that that provided some some parking there. So I did take those under advisement, and I bring them to your attention, but, you know, basically DPW Engineering and Parking Services are both in agreement and supportive of the idea of extending the no parking zone further south. It's a very congested area of North Street, especially at peak hours of the commute times and the, you know, with the schools in close proximity that also add to that, you know, congestion. I I think it's best that we extend the no parking zone.
Thanks, Chief. I would agree. I mean, I I sympathize with that one person who had a concern, but if there's a sightline issue, there's a sightline issue, and that trumps everything. But also, if there's an emergency, like they can do like everybody else, there's lots of side streets there, and also there are neighbors, driveways, they can ask. In a, you know, in a, in a pinch, if they had to go somewhere. But certainly, if we're gonna, if we acknowledge that there's a sight, line of sight issue, then there's a line of sight issue, and I think we have to address that. So thank you, and certainly, you know, all the concerns we would are taken into, you know, consideration like you did, but there are other options there, I think. So, thank you. Jill?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Chief. So when we previously looked at a sightline issue, maybe it was last two, two meetings ago, you had a map drawing out, or DPW had a map drawing out the sightline issues. Do you have? Uh, I can't remember the dimensions of sightline. Do you have, it wasn't with the package, so do you have other materials showing? This looks to be like a a significant number of residents. It looks like your letter to them just went out 10 days ago. I don't know whether everybody received it. So just drawing back to giving people three months' notice for a parking permit change annually and and giving residents maybe a week to respond to this. I wonder whether maybe some people didn't get the letter, didn't have the opportunity to open it. And also, I would love to see the sightline map. In addition, since the the person who wrote in the complaint, it was one complaint, it seems to be two driveways. It seemed to suggest that there were school employees parking there, perhaps even school students. Whether you considered, and I recognize that it's heavily traveled, and but whether you considered a parking restriction from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, 9:30 AM, or during the commuting hours that would allow the homeowners to have contractors or other people park in front of their home if need be, but would preclude the employees, school employees, from all day parking there.
Why, considering the, and in answer to your earlier question, I do not have any measurements from DPW available at the present time. Restricting the time would, I guess, solve the problem if if these are, in fact, school employees or students that are parking there. But would not correct the the line of sight issue for, you know, the remainder of the day or weekends, if you will.
Right, although you could, depending on where the line of sight map comes out. And do you know whether they did, did DPW do a line of sight map like they did in the other?
Sunshine Avenue.
I'm sorry?
That was Sunshine Avenue.
Sunshine, yeah.
Thank you. The other parking? Do you know whether they actually did a line of sight?
I I do not know for sure if they did actual measurements, no.
So Fred, I would ask that we find out from DPW before we vote on this new no parking, whether they've done the the line of sight analysis, whether it covers the entire distance. And that we, my my request is that we do the least restrictive but cognizant of safety mechanism and consider at least a, you know, starting off with hourly restrictions. Parking is a, parking is, and I will come to it for the next one as well, I'm gonna have a number of questions, parking is the number one issue that we hear frustration about. And usually, it's the lack of parking as opposed to excess parking. So.
Totally, totally understand, and, you know, I've always taken the approach of being very conservative when it comes to eliminating any parking anywhere throughout town. This is an area where, again, you know, based on the congestion, heavy volume of traffic, the speed limit in that area is 35 miles an hour, I believe. Uh, and there's a number of, you know, it's just not a straight, a straight road. There's some curves.
Yeah, no, I'm familiar. I am familiar with that, yeah.
Yeah, I I agree with the curvature, and then nobody knows how to behave at that, you know, triple stop sign. At Patterson, at North Maple, at North Street, it's I I think people need to go back to driving school and how you rotate through stop signs when you're all there. It's, so I think having cars parked just just aggravates people's inability to follow the rules of the road at stop signs in general. That's what I've always encountered.
And I agree, and I, we are working hard at parking, obviously, in lots of places, so I think we all agree on that. This area here is a little bit different. This is not a parking situation, you know, where we see downtown or in business districts. This is really a public safety issue, and I, you know, people do speed there, and they've always, you know, sped around there, and it is a it's a dangerous curve over there, and I really don't want to prolong this. I mean, we've had people reach out on this. Like I said, the one person who had an issue, who I guess acknowledged their, you know, the need to do this, but wanted to have a safety, you know, backstop if they had, you know, to park in a pinch somewhere. But there are other options here. There are plenty of side streets, and there are neighbors driveways. And I, 10 days is a long time. I think they probably got their notices by now. But, Chief?
If I may say, so the letters were mailed out on the 17th. And I I did receive the first call from the resident that was supportive of the idea. Someone who has been, has lived in that area for about 50 years, I believe she said. She called me on Friday, the 21st. So I was happy to see that the the mail was delivered rather promptly. And she did have an opportunity to read the letter and and make a phone call, so.
Any other? Any other?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that, I'm gonna ask that we put the vote off on this for, till our next meeting, which is, I think, on the tenth. Two weeks, that will allow the media who are present to, to perhaps write an article about it, give other. Property owners the opportunity to comment if they haven't opened their mail in the last week, not everybody is focused on, there have been a lot of graduations, a lot of other activities. Also, to the opportunity to find out from Department of Public Works whether they actually did. Whether they have the line of sight study that they can share and. So I don't think a week is a lot of notice to give homeowners. So, and I recognize the, the road and the curvature, but again, I'm always looking for the least restrictive opportunity here.
Yeah, I think we all are, but again, I'm a little more focused on this issue with the public safety, but you see, Jim Michael's on it, Jim, did we do a? Do we have a sightline depiction here that we can throw up there?
I've been looking through the file and I'm. The person who did this study is off today, so I can't completely consult with them, but I haven't seen it yet, but. We'll keep, I'll keep looking for it, so.
Okay, thank you, because of that, let's push this off to two weeks, I am all set to vote for this now. But if, I don't think that's too much big ask to see that. Just a sightline, I know what it's like, I've, I've been grown up here, I've been there thousands of times and it's an issue, but. You know, if Jill's not familiar with it and wants to see it, a rendering of it.
I'm familiar with it, but I want to give the residents that live along that stretch an opportunity.
Well, yeah, I know, we had.
DPW's, DPW's sightlines analysis.
I, I appreciate that, we, we had the same discussion a few meetings ago and the people overwhelmingly over there in Sunshine. In fact, no one ever came out and, and, you know, so I appreciate the over, you know, the, the extra concern there, but. It's been ten days and I, I don't want to, you know, keep, you know, in, in two weeks, what are we gonna say in two weeks, it's, I mean, I don't know. Lauren, what's, let's, let's hear from Lauren, Lauren, what's your, your thoughts on it?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, given, you know, folks have already responded and, and seem to get the letter, I. I think in the context of safety, I, I already mentioned, I use that to avoid the post road from Glenville, that's how I get to. Cos Cob or Riverside, I don't take the post road, so I'm on that, like, almost every day. And I see the cars parked there and with that, you know, line of sight, so, you know, I'm happy to give an extension to hear from the neighbors, but it's not gonna change my mind in two weeks.
Okay, Chief, is it, again, I'm ready to vote right now, I don't think it's necessary to go another two weeks on this, but. I'll give you the final word on this, this is your last meeting as Deputy Chief, if you think it's, you're okay extending it two more weeks. Of, to see if we hear from somebody, which, I don't know if we will, but happy to do that, but your call.
The one, the one thing I will say is that it seems that. School is, the, school is out of session at this point in time, so. There may, if these cars that were parked there were the result of school, then. You know. There probably won't be cars parked there on a regular basis, but again, one car, one accident, that's, you know. That could, could be, you know, significant.
Yeah, and that's why I'm gonna ask to vote now, I'd rather be safe than sorry and public safety means. Means the most, it's the thing that I worry about the most and public health, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna call for a vote on this now.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make one additional comment on that, if, if in fact that. That this is school parking and not resident parking. One would think that all of the residents would be happy to forego, if they don't like the parking, happy to forego. The, the parking and be in favor of the no parking zone. So what we might find in two weeks is that we get, you said, I think twenty-five residents, is that what you said, there are twenty-five households along this strip? Maybe we'll get letters or comments from numerous residents. If however, they weren't aware that we're about to make a no parking zone in front of their house. It'll give them the opportunity to say no, this isn't just school parking, this is, you know. Some other usage and. So I would say let's not be hasty, also, has there been an accident there out of curiosity, Deputy Chief?
Not recently, no.
There ha, there has been.
Has not.
No, there has, there, Chief, there has been accidents around that stretch in the past, I don't know that recently.
Due to the park, has there been an accident due to the parking?
None that I can contribute to at this point in time.
Under, but you're, you're, the chief, your, your opinion and that of DPW is that this is a hazard? Yes?
There is a significant enough line of sight issue when there are cars parked there that would warrant a, a no parking zone in that area.
Right, which is why I asked for my line of sight study to see.
So, anyway. Again, I'll, if, Jim? Are you with us, is Jim still with us?
Yes, I'm still here.
Yeah. Could you, could you produce one of these for us, I mean, I'm. I'd like to call for a vote now, I, I think this is totally unnecessary, but if you have a line of sight depiction, I. I'm willing to put it off two weeks for the affirmative vote that's gonna come anyway on this, but. Can you produce one in two weeks?
Yeah, we can get something within the next two weeks.
Okay, thank you, all right, thanks, we have to get going, we have a big day here, so we'll, we'll circle back there and, and vote on two weeks, okay, thank you. And Deputy Chief, you have one more issue on Millbank?
Yes, correct, this is. Another ordinance change proposal. For Millbank Avenue. So this came to our attention, actually, a resident that lives on this particular block. As my understanding approached DPW and requested, or complained about. You know, the parking on the west side of the roadway that was really. Causing vehicles traveling southbound to travel into the northbound lane. Causing, again, another safety issue. The area that we're talking about on Millbank Avenue is just south of the traffic rotary. Just south of the intersection with Lexington Avenue and. As you're traveling southbound on Millbank Avenue from the post road. You have a traffic light that controls the crosswalk just north of the traffic rotary. Then you have the rotary, Lexington Avenue off to the right. And just beyond Lexington Avenue, there's a fairly significant curve in the road. A right-hand curve, so line of sight is an issue and the roadway there. There, the roadway there really is not conducive to allow vehicles to park along the side of the road. Because again, that's an, that's a road that I travel on frequently and I'm sure many of us do and. There is just no way for two cars to remain in their lane, designated lane and. Pass each other when there's cars parked on that side of the road. There's other sections of Millbank Avenue that are tight, but this seems to be the most significant. Section, it's one block where there is, where the road is really narrow. And so what we're proposing is that. We post that as a no parking zone. For, from one hundred feet south of the intersection with Lexington Avenue. Till the intersection with Lincoln Avenue.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Chief. Lauren, you have any questions, we'll give you a first shot.
No, I don't.
Okay, Jill, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Deputy Chief, about how many parking spots would this eliminate? And is there parking on the other side of the street?
So there's, no, the definite, no, there's no, the, the proposal is to. Limit parking along both sides of the street.
So how many parking spots would, would this proposal eliminate?
So the parking, there's, there is not currently parking spaces there that are marked or lined similar to what you would see in the downtown area? Okay. If I, if I had to make an estimation, it'd probably be six, six, maybe eight parking spaces or. Enough distance to park eight vehicles.
So in, just out of curiosity, then, in this map, in the package, there are these little dots, what do the dots stand for? I thought that might be. I thought the dots mean, I, I, looking at it, I thought the dots maybe were parking spots, but maybe not, do you know what the dots are?
Definitely not, no, I, I. Do not have an explanation of what exactly the dots mean.
Okay, and is this a resident-only parking area?
No, it's not.
And do we know whether the people that park in this area are residents of this block or they're guests?
The, the way it was relayed to me was that they are not residents.
Have we thought about making it a resident-only, you know, you have resident permit areas. Within this, this vicinity, right?
Yeah, this, this is, we're proposing this be a no parking zone. For, for anyone because of the width of the roadway and. The safety concern with vehicles that have to enter into the opposing lane of traffic to. Maneuver past parked vehicles.
Right, but if, if it's, again, I'm gonna, you know, this, this time it looks like the residents got notice on, so I guess that would be a question as well, May. Eleventh, right, is your letter?
Correct.
Next week, right, next week, have you heard from any of the residents?
I have not. And it's. The engineer that assisted me with this project, Jason Kaufman, who's unfortunately not available today, but. Communicated with him yesterday and he had not heard of any concerns from any of the residents either.
So is this roadway width, first of all, and, and I know that parking in this area, right, I mean, is very tight. Is this roadway width narrower than the other roads in the, in the vicinity? Should we?
This seemed, and I do not have measurements in front of me right now, but this. Certainly seems like the narrowest of the stretches of Millbank Avenue where parking is allowed.
So, so a couple of points of clarity, Jim Michael here with the DPW. Those dots that you see that are along the edge of the road, those are trees.
Okay.
That's what those indicate. Millbank Avenue has about eighty-one hundred cars per day going through there, so there's a significant volume of traffic. And this is definitely the narrowest section of Millbank Avenue. With many of, you know, many of these sections being less than thirty feet in width and we typically will have. For a travel lane, eleven or so feet of width per lane, so that's twenty-two, so that really only leaves us, you know, less than eight feet. Or so, and I think in some places it's twenty-five, twenty-six feet of width, so. That really gives us very little space for a car to be parked without somebody having to cross the center line. And then, you know, I also just, you know. It gets into a, you know, another piece of public safety too, that we did have a couple fatalities south of this section as well on Millbank Avenue. We've done some improvements down there, we've reduced some of the parking in that stretch to clear up the crosswalk location, but. This has all been part of this whole stretch to improve some safety in this area as well.
Yeah, Jim, do you agree, I mean, can, do you have from your own records, how many spaces would be eliminated? And where are these?
I was, I, I was looking for that and there isn't a clear. Number listed of that because like Deputy Chief Moreno said. When we, when we do have areas like this where we don't mark out the specific spaces. It depends on whether it's a, you know, like a Ford Expedition or a, you know, a Mini Cooper that is there, how many cars you could park there, so. But, you know, and then you also have driveways, breaks where you have to have clear zones, so it's really tough to tell how many parking spaces would be eliminated.
If you had to guess, would you agree that it's six to eight? Is that, I'm just, from your experience?
I would. I mean, that would be a rough estimate, I don't know exactly, I would have to, I'd have to give a little bit more thought and look here, so.
From a, from a public safety point of view, I would, I mean, I, I understand the crossing, and I travel this route as well, as well as the North Street route. Although I, I think removing, first of all, the road's not wide enough, unfortunately, it seems to put the bike lanes on the either, either side, but I'm certainly, if you're going to, if we remove the parking and re-stripe, I hope you'll have a. Ample shoulder for cyclists, but it would seem that it might just increase the speed of cars traveling. Right, if they're given sort of an open stretch, how, how will you control for that?
So I think when it comes to that, we can take a look and see if there's. If there is the ability to put a head stripe on this section that might narrow it down, that would give a little bit of a shoulder for. You know, cyclists or whatever, there's also, you know, I don't believe there's a big. Speed issue directly at this location because it is. In what we would consider and. You know, it's in the, kind of in the middle of an intersection and. It's not a normal intersection, let's just say that, it's got some uniqueness to it and. So people are pretty aware of their surroundings and if they haven't traveled there frequently, they're definitely. Gonna, you know, keep their awareness, so. I think that.
I, I would suggest that. That because of the way the lights are timed, that there, there is potentially a speeding issue.
Yeah, last year when we, we did this last year where. Where Sonny Bona was tragically killed and we had another person near there hit by a car not too far from this area. And we eliminated spaces right there where Agnes Morley, right?
Yes, I remember.
Wait, how many, was it like five we eliminated to, to?
I thought it was just two on either side of the walkway, but we couldn't.
Yeah, I remember, I remember doing it last year because of the sightline and I know the residents are very happy and it's improved a lot. And I have heard back from the people in the condos next to Agnes Morley, two people, so. I'm good with this and I know Jim took the words out of my mouth, if, if there's a car parked there, you may be forcing somebody over the double yellow lines. Which is, which is an issue and it is the narrowest stretch over there, so.
I could just mention one other thing, the east side of the, this block, the roadway from Lexington to Lincoln. Is the cemetery there, so residential parking, you know, I mean, that, there's no residences along that particular side of the street. Obviously. Obviously.
Okay.
Lessens the impact for residential parking. And again, I travel that road early in the morning many times. Doesn't seem that residents are using that stretch for overnight parking.
Alright, thanks Chief. Okay, is there a motion to approve this? Item?
I hope I'll read it right, I motion, Lauren Raven, that we approve the proposed amended, amendment to the traffic ordinance for Millbank Avenue.
I will second that. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes?
I'm, I'm on the fence on this one. I'm gonna abstain.
And Lauren Raven is a yes.
Thank you both. Okay, that passes two zero one. Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it, we'll see you in about an hour.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, take care. Okay, next up, last two items, we have Town Attorney Amina Ahmed here about a proposed sublease between the Greenwich Adult Daycare Center and the Open Arts Alliance. Good morning, Amina.
Good morning, Mr. First Selectmen, members of the board. I'll try to talk fast here, so you can be on your way. As you have seen from the memo from our office, the Greenwich Adult Daycare Center, also known as River House, which occupies the old Myenas Pump Station, has come to the town to see if they could do a sublease with a local organization known as the Open Arts Alliance. The River House, Greenwich Adult Daycare Center currently is under lease with the town, and their lease goes through February of 2025. And that lease specifically provides for a sublease, but it says that if they wish to sublease any portion of the property that they're leasing from us, they need to get town approval, and can't do it if the town does not consent. So that's why we are here. I believe there are representatives, and Donna Spellman is Executive Director of River House, and I believe there's someone here from the Open Arts Alliance. But generally, the, as I said, the lease does allow for a sublease, but the town has to give consent. And in terms of consent from the town, the first stop is of course, the Board of Selectmen, that's why we're here. But there is also, you know, approval needed by the RTM, since the lease, original lease is based on RTM approval, and so the town, the, the town approval would also have to come from the RTM, this is currently on the June agenda for the RTM. And then in between that, there is also another step, and that's the Planning and Zoning Commission for an MI approval. So there are several layers of review and approval here, but we're starting with you as we always do, and we're here to answer questions. I provide a little more detail in the memo as to what exactly the sublease entails, and last night, I responded to an email from Select Person Oberlander, who had inquired about insurance levels, and what type of insurance Open Arts Alliance would be providing, as well as whether there was a sublease document that could be shared. So I did respond to Select Person Oberlander, and copied you, Mr. Camillo, and, and Select Woman Raven. That, that sublease agreement, as you will note, is still, I believe in draft stage, we got that pretty quickly from River House, because we were trying to get on the call for the June RTM. So I'm sure there's a little bit of work to be done on that, but we're trying to get everything lined up for the RTM, and of course, to answer your questions here. In terms of insurance, I had consulted with the town's Risk Management Director, and we went back to River House and said, we really need to have Open Arts Alliance comply with the, the standard requirements of insurance that the town would ask of anybody, including River House, so I, my understanding is Open Arts Alliance is working to, to make sure they have all the insurance coverage. So that's what I have to say. Again, I'm happy to answer questions, and of course, the two representatives from the two agencies are here as well.
Thank you, Amina, and I know you've, they've worked out the details and shared space and all that with COVID, with the COVID situation hopefully coming to an end soon, but we're not quite there yet. Of all provisions been made concerning that, I know that our rates are really good now, and we're, we're getting close to the other side, but I assume all that's been addressed too, and I'll ask Donna that. How you doing, Donna?
Yeah, actually, River House has been open and operating following CDC guidelines, of course, socially distancing, the whole nine yards since last July. So we're nearing our, a year, I mean, it's hard to believe that we were, we were really only closed for about three months. And now I'm very happy and proud to say that we are a fully vaccinated environment, everybody here, all our clients, all of our staff. So, you know, we're, we're about as safe as, as anybody can be. And our partner, Open Arts Alliance, very much the same. Go ahead, Rocco, feel free to jump in.
We're entirely vaccinated population. Our students that aren't vaccinated yet are all wearing masks, we are socially distancing. Everyone is more than six feet apart, and we are following CDC guidelines and working very closely with Donna and the wonderful staff at the River House to make sure everyone is safe.
Thank you, Rocco, and thank you, Donna, yeah, that was my next question, sorry, I appreciate that. And appreciate you coming before us. Any other questions, Lauren or Jill?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, and just a couple of questions in addition to the insurance one that I had raised earlier, what percentage of the space will be occupied by Open Arts Alliance?
It's, it's actually, it's one room plus one alcove, and it won't be permanently occupied, it will be shared during River House hours, during our hours, and then after hours, it will be occupied solely by Open Arts Alliance.
And how did you come to the rent number? Rocco?
We, we looked at comparable, we looked at comparable spaces in town, we came to, we use LoopNet, to be very honest, as a guidance in terms of commercial real estate, and then we also talked about, Donna and I talked a lot about the partnership and what we provide to each other. So we'd actually come up with a figure of twenty-two dollars per square foot. There's slightly less than five hundred square feet that we are talking about occupying. We'd come back to the Board of River House, and they'd said, can we go up a little bit to make it an even one thousand a month? And we said, sure, that seems very fair, given the partnership that we have. So that was sort of the, the genesis of, of that.
And, and in addition to the space, will you be getting any services from River, I'm, I'm curious, because the River House lease is a dollar a year lease, yet you'll be paying a thousand dollars a month to the River House, so I'm just curious about, and not having the sublease document in front of us. You know, we don't have any of the terms.
Sure, so can you, can you be more specific with your question, so that I can answer it to the best of my ability? Is, is the question about the programs that we're running?
No, 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 I'm, I'm, you know, familiar with Open Arts Alliance, and thank you for all that you do for the community, and I am a parent of someone who participated in one of your shows at the Boys and Girls Club, actually, so I got to see you in action, which was fantastic. So all of that's great, but it's on the documentation aspect of it, it's the, this, the River House leases Greenwich Adult Daycare as part of the Dollar a Year Lease program, so I'm, I was interested in the fact that you're spending, you know, twelve thousand dollars a year to rent space from an organization that's getting space from the town for a dollar a year, and so I'm wondering, in addition to the space, what you're getting in return for that?
Sure, I mean, the space is our number one, our, the space is our number one sort of, you know, relationship, but I would say actually what we're, what we get is so much more. We have access, in a lot of ways, what we're doing at, at Open Arts Alliance and with the River Houses, we're breaking new ground on programs, and we're breaking new ground on programs that work with senior citizens who have dementia and Alzheimer's disease. And one of the wonderful things about the population of folks at the River House, that we have access to knowledge in a database of people in the staff at River House that we can turn to and say, you know, we're thinking of running this program or creating this program, do you think this is a good idea? And so, you know, we have access to a wealth of information with the staff at River House that isn't just the space, and so we feel strongly that a thousand dollars a month is a fair trade for that.
But they're not, are they providing you with utilities, garbage disposal? Yeah, so there, so Donna, maybe you can talk about some of your costs that you, that you, the Greenwich Adult Daycare pays for, that will be passing through, because one would think as part of your nonprofit mission, you might provide that guidance, mentorship, and advice to Open Arts Alliance anyway, actually, or not, they were paying you a thousand dollars a month.
Absolutely, so. Yes, we, we are incredibly grateful to the town for this Dollar, Dollar a Year lease that provides us with our space and our building. Beyond that, we're responsible for a hundred percent of the upkeep inside and outside of our building, so. So yes, garbage disposal, nightly cleaning, and, and, you know, in, in reference to COVID, there's sanitizing that goes on every single night. Just all, all the maintenance, keeping the lights on. Just everything that goes along with, with building operations. Maintenance, getting, getting the HVAC up and running and keeping it running and getting it cleaned, and the kitchen, and, and just everything that goes into the building that, that we're responsible for. All of that will be included in what Open Arts Alliance is provided, there's no additional fee for any of that. The other piece that is in the lease is that when River House is not in the building, Open Arts Alliance may have access to the, to the entire building in terms of their usage for, for, for additional space. Weekends, you know, evenings when, when we're not here.
Right, right. And do you have a general, are you, are you responsible as well for capital? Any capital-related work?
Yes.
Do you have a general order of magnitude of what you spend on, on your building operations and, and capital?
I'm gonna pull up our budget right now, so just give me one second.
And I, and I guess just from the, the, so I, I'm, in, in theory, I'm, I'm a hundred percent supportive of, about permitting the sublease, but I, you know, I'm slightly uncomfortable proving something without actually seeing the sublease document. So when is the RTM meeting, Amina, do you know offhand?
Yes, the meeting, I believe, is June seventeenth, Monday, the seventeenth. But I had sent that sublease document last night.
Oh, okay, I didn't see.
Yes, so it was part of the attachment in response to your email.
All right, so I did not see the attachment, let me pull it up.
There are two attachments, one is the insurance, the other is the sublease.
Okay, I saw, I, I saw your email on my phone, I didn't see the attachment, so. Attach, I'm just in terms of, okay.
Jill, our, in answer to your question, it, our, our expenses for total building, which includes utilities, building supplies, outside maintenance, window cleaning, security, housekeeping, all of that, our total budget is a hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Hundred forty-three, two fifty for the year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Um, so just, I'm, I'm not gonna be able to read this quickly enough. But Amina, you're, you're confident that the sublease, when finalized, and I assume you'll have to finalize before the RTM, will provide the town with a pass-through of all of the provisions in the over lease and protection, so that the town will be protected?
Yes, and, you know, I'll make sure when, when we get a final version of that, I'll take another look at it, but one of the samples that I had, I, I provided some language for the sublease, and some of the language that I took was from another similar situation where the Garden Education Center entered into a sublease with the Tree Conservancy. So there was very similar language there that has now been included in this proposed sublease, because that, again, went through the RTM approval process and got a sign-off from the RTM. So a lot of the provisions that you see in the document before you are also from the other sublease that was approved. But I will make sure, you know, we take another look at the final document, and that it ties in closely to the provisions in, in the main lease, but also ties into the insurance that's being provided or will be provided by Open Arts Alliance. So we want to be sure, obviously, you know, that, that it's a town building, we want to be sure the town is protected.
So, thank you for that, and I'm not, without looking at the two leases, the Botanical Center and Greenwich Adult Daycare, it's hard to know whether they are similar, I know we've had some forms, but some not, so. I'd appreciate that, and subject to compliance with that, I have no other questions, thank you both.
Thank you, Jill. Mike Basham has his hand up. We can unmute Mike. Morning, Mike.
Morning, everyone. Just to follow up on Jill's comments about the lease, Kip Berweger, Chairman of L and R, was instrumental in helping revise the existing lease, his wife Kath is actually on the board, as I am on the Treasury at River House. Kip was very instrumental in helping Amina reconfigure our current lease, the one that you will have before you, so. I, subject to obviously your approvals and getting insurance in place, I don't anticipate any difficulty at the RTM with the lease or with the well, any, any issues with it, it'll come before Kip's committee, my committee, probably one other, and I'm, I'm very comfortable with that, it will secure passage.
Okay. Thank you, Mike, appreciate that information. Okay.
So I, I just wanted to make a comment, Fred, I think this is really exciting, I'm, I'm very excited to see the intergenerational connection, I think that's so important, especially, you know, during what everybody's experienced during the pandemic, and Donna, based on your annual building maintenance, you know, the, a thousand dollars seems more than fair for both sides. I'm sorry this is personal, but Rocco, we love the house your father built. For eighteen years.
I'm so glad, every time I pass it, I say, I have to, I have to pop, knock on the door and see if I can come.
Yes, definitely, come visit.
I'm so glad, it makes me happy that you guys are there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I appreciate, Amina, your information, Mike, Donna, and Rocco.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Amina, you'll be, will be hearing back from you, I guess, when you get a little, from your, a few more details on that, but I'm confident enough with this right now in, in order to get it over to the RTM.
So Lauren Raven, I motion that we accept the proposed sublease between the Greenwich Adult Daycare, Inc., and Open Arts Align, Align, Alliance, Inc.
There is also another part to it, so the Board of Selectmen would have to refer it to Planning and Zoning for a municipal improvement approval. So we'd need a vote on that as well.
Okay, do you want, do we want to do that in the same vote? So I'll, I'll reword it, Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the proposed sublease between the Greenwich Adult Daycare, Inc., and Open Arts Alliance, Inc., and refer the sublease to the Planning and Zoning Commission for MI approval status.
I'll second that, but ask Lauren whether we can make it subject to legal review of, and compliance with the lease, the subleasing compliance with the lease documents.
So as Jill amended.
All, all those in favor with Jill's amendment, those two components of it, all those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thank you very much for all your questions and for all the answers, much appreciated. Okay, last item of the day is the appointment. Okay, last item uh of the day is the appointment of a new Deputy Police Chief, and we have with us our Police Chief, Jim Heavy. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, uh members of the Board of Selectmen. Um, it's uh again bittersweet that I uh I wish Deputy Chief Mark Marino hail and farewell on his special day. Uh you guys certainly made sure that he continued to work very hard, even on his very last day. Uh but I want to uh, I have the honor and privilege to recommend to you uh Captain Craig Gray uh for the position of Deputy Chief. Will fill um Deputy Chief Marino's uh position, of course, big shoes to fill. Uh Craig is um a thirty-year career Greenwich Police Officer who's held many positions uh over many years. Um, he'll be well-known in town, um not only for all of his good works as a police officer, but as the um Public Information Officer for the department. Um, he has a bachelor's degree from UConn in Society and Justice and a master's degree from Marist in Public Administration. Uh he currently commands the Detective Division, he's also been the Patrol Commander, uh so he has uh he also worked in professional standards, so he has a vast knowledge and understanding of the workings of the Greenwich Police Department. He's also um a retired uh US Army Reserve First Sergeant uh who who deployed overseas to uh some of our conflicts. So I I, at this time, without any reservation, would recommend him to the Board of Selectmen to be the uh the next Deputy Chief of the Greenwich Police Department.
Thank you, Chief. Uh I have no questions, only to add that uh having known uh Cap- now Captain Gray um for many years as a private citizen and as a state representative and as as First Selectman, he has always been the same person, he's always very helpful and very communicative, um very well-liked, uh very hard worker, uh knows the town inside and out, and uh I look forward to working with him in this in his new position. He's a, he's a good choice and uh we're very excited uh to have him as a new Deputy Chief, but subject to a vote, of course, but uh I commend the uh the selection. Uh we'll turn it over to her comments or questions to Lauren or Jill.
Um, I actually had a chance to uh chat. Um, I'm always gonna get it mixed up, Chief Deputy Deputy Chief, I have to somehow tattoo it to my forehead. I guess currently Captain about to be promoted to Deputy Chief. And um thank you for taking the time to um contact me and uh discuss some of, you know, future opportunities, especially as you take over parking services because it's so critical to some of the work that we're doing as part of the Reimagine uh Committee. So I'm very excited about um your promotion and the opportunity to work more closely with you in the future.
Thank you, Lauren. Jill?
Yeah, th- thank you, Fred. Um, I also had the opportunity to speak to Captain Gray and I appreciate uh his outreach, I'm sorry, there's a little background noise. Um, one of the things he said, uh I wrote down, actually, I wrote down a couple of them, but I thought I would share it with his uh permission with the with people listening. Um, he commented on the department as having superior law enforcement personnel and practices and uh his philosophy is mission first, people always, I guess something he learned in the service. I thought that was um really telling of our police department um and leadership from the top, and I um am grateful that he has uh agreed to step forward into this uh additional leadership position, and thank you, Chief Heavy, for for making this recommendation, and I know our town will be very well-served um with him in this position, so thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Okay, um, is there a motion?
See Mary. Could I just say, could I just say one thing?
Yeah, hi, Mary.
Hi, I just wanted to to comment a minute on the the search process. Um, this was a search that was also included outside candidates, and I think that as you've all discovered, obviously, uh Captain Gray's exceptional qualifications, you should know that um, number one, uh compared to the outside candidates, um no one um even came close to uh a- all of our internal candidates. So I think that uh we are very well-served um in the command staff at the Police Department, and I think that, you know, uh we're we're very pleased uh with the selection of Captain Gray and his promotion. But you should know that uh in comparison, uh our our uh our internal candidates were extraordinarily well-qualified.
Thank you, Mary, and I'll echo that, the the final three candidates are internal, were terrific and all could have done this job very, very well, but we are very, very excited uh to uh take this vote. So uh with that, I will uh ask for a motion.
So Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the appointment of Craig Gray to Deputy Police Chief.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes. Lauren Raven, yes.
Thank you very much, and congratulations Deputy Chief Craig Gray, and I think I see him on the call here.
Am I unmuted?
You you are, congratulations.
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner. And I thank you to the I I would just say thank you to everybody, uh Chief Heavy for the recommendation and to the Board for having confidence in me and being able to assist the town of Greenwich in public safety uh from what is a critical position. And so thank you very much for your confidence.
Well, thank you for stepping forward and for all you've done in in your past service, both to the country and to the town of Greenwich. And uh we look forward to even better things from you, Chief.
And just to have everybody save the date on their calendar, uh June fourteenth, which is a Monday, we will have a promotion ceremony that will include Deputy Chief Craig Gray, you'll get used to that, Craig, don't worry. Um, a uh captain, a lieutenant and a sergeant, due to the succession of changing uh areas of responsibility, we'll have a ceremony here at Greenwich Police Headquarters on June fourteenth, uh with details and invitations forthcoming.
Flag day.
Uh it's also the US Army's birthday, which is appropriate as well, so.
Those are the Army vet. Okay, we got a couple of them here. Alrighty, thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations, Craig, excellent choice by everyone. Best of luck to you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Mark.
Alrighty, everybody, we're gonna be heading over to see uh Deputy Chief Marino in a few minutes, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh Lauren Raven, I motion that we adjourn our regular meeting at eleven forty-six.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it. Jenny, Barb, take care, see you in a little bit.